Perfect. Alright guys, I'm gonna go ahead and get started. Hello, welcome to Weizant's AP Calculus AB Test Prep Session. My name is Megan Sample. I have, I started teaching AP Calculus about 10 years ago in the classroom. I am a certified mathematics teacher and I'm also certified in AP Calculus. So I've been teaching this class and preparing people for this exam for about a decade now. I also have a ton of students that I work with on Weizant's that I'm doing test prep with as well. So I'm very, very familiar with all of this material as well as the exam. And what I want to try to do is get you guys familiar with it today. So let's go ahead and get started with some AP prep. Remember, you should feel free to drop in, drop your questions in the chat box at any time. This, and this guy, guys, I want this to be an interactive prep session. So help me help you. If you have a question while I'm going on, drop it in the chat box and I will try to pause and answer those as I'm going. So let's go ahead here. Oh, sorry. I think I just got pepper in my throat, excuse me. Let's see. Okay, that worked Anna, even though you couldn't find the mic, I got you. And get my chat box open. Alright, cool. Thanks. I just wanna make sure I had everything going before I get started here. So again, my name is Megan Sample and this presentation is being put on through Weizant's and we are focusing on the AP Calculus AB exam. And there we go. So are you taking the AP Calculus AB exam this spring? And you want to be well-prepared on test day? I'm assuming that's why you're here. So the AP Calculus AB exam in 2021 is going to be held on Tuesday, May 4th at 8:00 AM. Um, great question and let me see real quick if I can drop it. Oh, I might have to ask the moderator. Normally, somebody asked me if they'd be getting a copy of these slides and I love to share it, but I don't see the option to drop it in the chat. Normally you can attach a file and I don't see it. Do you know if we can get that permission turned on? Not hearing a response. So if you'll give me just a second, guys, what I will do is yes, I would love you to have these slides. So I'm going to go ahead and give you a Dropbox link. I can just put that in the chat box. I have this saved on my Dropbox. I don't want you guys to edit, but you can definitely view. There you go. So I just dropped a link in the chat box for anybody that wants a copy of this presentation. You just put that URL into a browser, it will take you to where you can download this PowerPoint and you will have all of those slides. Alright, so before you sit down to take the exam, it's, it's critical that you guys know how the calculus AB test is formatted, what topics it covers and how you'll be scored on it. So this presentation is gonna go over all of that information. I'm also gonna show you some official sample problems and give you some tips on just the best way to prepare for your AP Calculus AB exam. So the exam was updated in May of 2017. So in this presentation, I am gonna explain what changes have been made and how they might affect the way that you want to review. So the AP Calculus AB exam, it can sometimes seem overwhelming, guys. I'm not gonna lie, it, it, the test sounds very overwhelming. But I want to break it down into very clear and manageable information for you today. Because if I break it down, it's really not that much. And if you guys want more information than what I'm gonna give you today, you can actually check out the College Board's new AP Classroom Tool for AP Calculus AB. They have a bunch of additional resources and information. And so that is what this link right here behind my head, this link right here is to that, to the College Board's AP Classroom Tool. So if you want more details than what I'm giving today, that link is loaded with information straight from the College Board who puts on the exam. Alright. So due to the ongoing COVID-19 coronavirus pandemic that's been taking over this world for the last too long, your AP tests are gonna actually be held over three different sessions between May and June. So your test dates and whether or not your test will be online or on paper, it's going to depend on your school. So definitely make sure you check with your school. I can tell you for sure that you'll take the test sometime between May and June and either online or on paper. But again, that's just gonna be completely dependent of your school. So to get further information, you're gonna have to get with your school on that. Alright, so let's talk about the format of this exam. Alright, so the AP Calculus AB exam, it's three hours and 15 minutes long and it has two sections. Both of these sections are divided into two parts. A part where you get to use a calculator and a part where you don't get to use a calculator. So you're gonna have a multiple choice section. So here is an overview of the format of the AP Calculus AB Multiple Choice Section. So you can see it's got 45 questions altogether. You got an hour and 45 minutes to take it and it's half of your total score. So the multiple choice is broken down into two sections. On Part A, you cannot use a calculator and you've got 30 questions and you've got an hour to answer them in. And Part B is only 15 questions. You get 45 minutes and a calculator, I love how they say this, the calculator's required, not allowed, but required. And they're pretty serious about that. Some of the questions on there, you literally couldn't do them by hand without a calculator. So you definitely need to make sure you have a calculator that is one that you're able to use on the exam and that you practice with it ahead of time. Because this isn't one of those where you can just do it by hand. That some of these literally are impossible without the calculator. Um, I will make a note that the AP Calculus AB exam has had some small changes to its formats. Previously, a part A of the multiple choice had 28 questions and part B had 17. So they have switched it just a little bit. In case you have taken this before, it's gonna be a slightly difference. And then you've got the free response section. So here's a rundown of the format of the AP Calculus AB Free Response Section. You got six questions in total. You get an hour and a half to take it in and it's worth the other half of your score. It's also broken down into two sections. Part A where you have to have a calculator and there's just two questions with multiple parts, but just two questions and you have half an hour. And then Part B has four questions. You get 60 minutes and there's no calculator allowed on it. So this can all look a little complicated, but basically the AP Calculus AB exam consists of four parts. The first two are multiple choice and then the last two are free response. And you are required to use a calculator for the middle two parts. And you cannot use a calculator for the first part and the last part. So get to use a calculator in the middle of the exam, not at the beginning and not at the end. And you do multiple choice, multiple choice, then free response, then free response. It's kind of how that is sectioned out for you. Alright, so now that we know what it's structured like, let's talk about what topics are actually on this test because you kinda need to know what to practice. So content on the calculus AB exam can be divided into three main topic areas. The College Board refers to these as big ideas. Within these three big ideas are more specific topics called enduring understandings. And each enduring understanding contains both learning objectives and essential knowledge that the student should have already learned by the time of the exam. And as I mentioned, there have been some updates to the AP Calculus AB exam. Namely, the big ideas are now integrated within each of the eight units that are covered in the course. But the good news for you guys is that there have not been any changes to the structure of the exam. So the exam is gonna be structured exactly the same. So I've listed each of the big ideas and their learning objectives on the next slides for you guys. And since these are the most relevant for students looking for like what to study on the exam, that's pretty much, that's what we're gonna focus on is on those big ideas. And for the sake of length and clarity, I left out the enduring understandings and the essential knowledge. If you would like to see these as well as a more, you know, detailed information on the content covered by the exam, you can check out the AP Calculus AB Course Description. That would be what this link right here on the screen is for. That URL will take you to the AP Calculus AB Course Description and it goes super hardcore into details if that is what you are looking for. But just know that the information that I'm gonna give you today, it's gonna give you a solid look at what you're expected to know for the exam. Frankly, I think the course description is a bit overwhelming, but if you're somebody that really likes details, that is out there for you. But I'm just gonna cover the big things that you need to know on this test. So again, these big ideas that I'm about to put up on these slides, these are the skills that you're expected to know how to do for the exam. So there are three of them and the first one is change. You need to understand change. More specifically, you gotta understand how and when change occurs. You gotta be able to determine the rate of change. Interpret how different equations are structurally similar. Determine change over an interval of time. Analyze functions for intervals of continuity or for points of discontinuity. Determine the applicability of important calculus theorems using continuity. You gotta know how to find the rate of change based on the area of a region between a curve and the x-axis. And you're gonna need to model motion not constrained to a linear path. So these are all, so you gotta have, you gotta have a good understanding of how change works. And these are like the specific different types of change that you will see on this exam. So that is your first big idea. The second big idea that's on this exam is going to be limits. So you need to understand limits and be able to make sense of features of functions and their graphs. You gotta know the mathematical properties and rules for simplifying and evaluating limits as they apply to differentiation. You gotta be able to prove that a limit exists. Recognize the connection between differential, differentiate, man, I can't say that word today, differentiability and continuity. Interpret the meaning of a derivative within a problem. Solve problems involving the slope of a tangent line. Solve problems involving related, related rates optimization and rectilinear motion. Solve problems involving rates of change in applied context. And solve how the sum of infinitely discrete terms can be a value represented in a continuous function. And your last big idea is analysis of a function. And this is a lot of different things, but pretty much just being able to analyze the function. Specifically, you need to be able to close loopholes so a conclusion about a function is always true. That's something like, I don't know, if you have a rational function and you're gonna simplify it by factoring something out of the numerator and the denominator, then you need to set a restriction that x cannot equal whatever that factor was that you took out to make those two functions the same. You gotta understand how the change of two units of measurement relate to one another and the rate at which they change. You gotta be able to interpret what numbers might tell you about other rates of change. You gotta be able to apply the mean value theorem to justify a conclusion. You need to know how to include additional information in a sound mathematical argument that optimizes a simple equation. You gotta be able to integrate to find areas related to differentiating, to finding slopes. Calculate derivatives and antiderivatives. Evaluate definite integrals. Analyze graphs defined using parametric equations or polar functions using the chain rule. Apply definite integrals to problems involving the average value of a function, motion and area and volume. Analyze differential equations to obtain general and specific solutions. And interpret, create and solve differential equations in form, excuse me, from problems in context. So a big list, but again, I did give you guys the link to this PowerPoint. These are the big three big ideas that you need to know how to do and kind of a breakdown of what each of those are. So the next thing I wanna talk about are the AP Calculus AB units. So since the big ideas of AP Calculus AB, they're covered throughout the course, it's, it's useful to know what each unit covers. So if you would want to use this URL that I put in here, that will give you another Dropbox link. That's another Dropbox link and it will take you to where I have put all of the units together along with a brief description of the topics that are covered in that unit so that you can kind of look at the whole course. And I also have it on the next slide for us. But if you want a nice PDF versions like Mark stuff off as you're studying, that link will take you to a PDF that I created for you guys. But here it is, small and in front of us. So if you look in the table, what you'll see here is you'll find each of the course's units. So down this column, and I know they're kind of all over the place. It goes one, two, then it jumps over here. I just was trying to fit it on one screen for you guys. So again, that link has it neatly in a PDF for you. But you can see the unit along with a brief description of what is covered in that unit. And then I've also included the weighted breakdown of how much the questions are worth on each part for the exam. So for example, let's look here. If you look at limits and continuity, that's only 10 to 12% of your test. But if you look down here, this is 17 to 20%. So integration and accumulation of a change is like a whopping 20% of your test. It's almost double the amount is tested compared to limits and continuity. So I wanted to give this to you. If you are, you know, tight on time and you don't really have time to cover all eight of these units to review, then clearly start in Unit 6 because this is the biggest part of your test. And then you probably wanna jump over here, right, to Unit 5 and focus there. So start with the higher percentage areas and put more focus there in order to optimize your grade on the test. Ideally, you'll have plenty of time and you can review all eight units. But again, if you're in a time crunch, these are the percentages of each unit that are on the exam. So I would focus a little bit, I would focus more time on the heavily weighted sections just to help you be a little more prepared. And I'm just gonna, I'm gonna leave these up and just for a minute or two, I'm gonna be quiet and kind of let you read through this on your own and see what is in each of those. And if you have any questions, again, feel free to drop those in the chat. I'll try to answer some before I continue. Alright, so hopefully you've had some time to digest a little bit of what's up here. But essentially knowing the topics covered in AP Calculus AB along with how they factor into your AP exam score, that's gonna help guide your studying and make it more productive. So also keep in mind, there's a lot more to know about these units and unit topics. And if you want more information, you can use the, the course guide, the link that I had on the previous page if you want more details. Alright, so somebody sent a question in that says, what is specifically meant by accumulation of change? So accumulation of change is typically just talking about integrating. That's really what is, is talking about going on there. But that would be something like finding the area under the curve. And using, you could, you know, you can use an integral, you can use a Riemann sum, but you're just, you're, you're talking about how the function is changing, how the area is changing under that curve. And that's all accumulation of change is really talking about. So mainly just talking about integrating or figuring out how a function is changing over time. You might use an integral to do the, the average, average value theorem, which if this is ringing a bell, 1 over b minus a and then the integral from a to b of your function, that's gonna be your average value theorem. So those are the kinds of things when it's talking about change. Trying to think of an example. Okay, I got one. So you might see a type of problem like, I've got a rectangular pool in the backyard and it's filling up at this specific rate. I'm filling it up with water at this specific rate and they give you some kind of information where change is happening, right? There's water being filled into there. And then they'll ask you some different questions, like can you, trying to, I'm off the top of my head, I'm having a hard time just thinking of one. But they might give you a table of values and ask you to say, well, at this instantaneous second in time, what is the rate that's changing? And you've gotta use the information given in the table to come up with, you know, a tangent line approximation, something like that. So accumulation of change, that you're looking at like things that are changing over time, like a balloon being filled up, a pool being filled with water. And they'll ask you specific questions about like what's happening specifically at this time or how much water would be in the pool after so many amounts, you know, X amount of minutes, those kinds of things. Hopefully that helps clarify a little bit. Alright, so let's go ahead and look at some sample questions. Alright, so looking at sample questions is one of the best ways to get a feel for what the AP Calculus AB exam will look like. So I'm gonna go over four sample questions, one from each part of the AP exam. And each of these questions was taken from the official AP Calculus AB Course Description, which again, there's the link for that up on the screen. So you can look at that if you want more complete answer explanations or if you just want some additional sample problems to practice with. That link right there will take you to the course description and there's, that's where I pulled these from and there's a bunch more there that you guys can look at to practice. But so this is an example of a multiple choice non-calculate question. It says if f of x equals sine of natural log of 2x, then f prime of x equals. Oh, I should've set like this and then you could have not seen the answers and tried them. But essentially, so a question like this, this is testing your ability to calculate a derivative, right? And for one like this, what, you'd have to use the chain rule since we have the natural log function inside the sine function. So you would have to use the chain rule to differentiate these composite functions. And if you guys were trying this one, the correct answer is B. Hopefully you guys, this is a pretty basic one. You could, you can see that in your head, right? The derivative of sine is cosine. And then the derivative of ln of 2x is 1 over x. So if you use your chain rule, you should get answer B for this one. Alright, so here's what a multiple choice calculator question looks like. It says, the temperature in degrees Fahrenheit of water in a pond is modeled by the function h, given by h of t equals that stuff. Where t is the number of days since January 1, t equals 0. What is the instantaneous rate of change of the temperature of the water at time t equals 90 days? So this question is testing your ability to solve problems with rapid rates of change. So what you would have to do is find the derivative in order to find the rate of change of the temperature of the water. And so really what I wanna point out on these questions, guys, is that you have to read it and literally know that when you see instantaneous rate of change, you gotta pink in your head, derivative, derivative. And then this is a calculator problem. So it's super easy. You type the function in and you tell your calculator to give you the derivative, right? And then you put in 90 for t and you should get answer choice B for this one as well. So if you do wanna try these, I did put the answers down there for you. But again, this one is just testing, can you find a derivative? And can you plug in t equals 90 for it? And you don't even have to find that complicated derivative by hand. You get to use your calculator. Ahmed, I'm going to answer that at the end of the session. Don't let me forget. Alright, oh. Here's a free response one where you're, again, you are allowed to use a calculator. So I'm gonna just, I'm gonna pause and let you read it and digest it for a second and then I'll talk about it. Hopefully that was enough time for you to read through this problem here. So you guys can see the free response, they've got multiple parts to them. And those parts typically all build on the same information. But so this question, if you've read through it, hopefully you realize that this is testing your knowledge of integrals. Finding the area, finding the volume of the solid. These are all integration problems right here. So parts A, B and C, these are all integration parts. And a question like this, just so you know, each part would be worth three points. So Part A is three points, B is three points and C is three points. And let me go ahead. So I'll give you a second to read this one over too. This is what a free response non-calculate question looks like. Oh, and this is an accumulation of change problem. So I was trying to give you some examples earlier. Read this one. This is an accumulation of change. Diana, yes, great question. Diana asked if you have a separate booklet for the free response questions with more room to put your answers? And the, the answer is absolutely yes, you do. Um, I wish I had one. I just, great questions and I will be sure to put an example page up in my next presentation. I just didn't think about it. But it's pretty much almost like a white page and like half of the page will say A. And then there'll be like a solid line and the bottom half of the page will say B under it. So you get like a solid half of the page for each part. So you would have like a front and a back broken up into four separate parts to work these out. So you definitely get a separate booklet for the free response questions and there is a lot more room to show your work. And you do have to show your work and write out full sentences for your answers on the free response. So they do give you plenty, plenty of space for all of that, like more space than you would probably need. So let's see, if you're done reading through it. This one actually tests your knowledge of multiple topics. It, you have to do derivatives for some parts, you gotta do integrals and other parts. So this is like one of those where you, you got a kind of a myriad of things, right? You gotta do a Riemann sum for part of it. So this is, this is testing your knowledge of multiple topics all in one question. And just so you know, a question like this, Part A, you're just estimating r prime of 4. So that's literally using a tangent line approximation. That would only be worth like one point versus Part B. It says, is there a time t between 3 and 5 at which r of t is 106 rotations per minute? And you have to justify your answer. That would be worth two parts. You're going to get one for the t value and you're going to get one point for your justification. And then parts C and D on here are a little bit more extensive. So they would be three points each. So again, that would be one part for part A, two points for part B, and three points for C and three points for D. Yes, somebody asked me if you would use, well, the slope formula for part A. And the answer, the answer to that is yes. Alright, so let's talk about how, I'm going to speed up a little bit too, just because I want to have some time for Q and A. But if I get going too fast, somebody just let me know and I'll try to slow down. Well, let's talk about how the AP Calculus AB exam is scored. So as I mentioned, the multiple choice section and the free response section, they're each worth 50% of your total exam score. So for the multiple choice section, you earn one point for each question that you answer correctly. And no points are deducted for incorrect answers. So guess what? Answer every single question, always answer every single question. Even if you're getting close to being out of time, fill them all in. They don't deduct anything for ones that are wrong, but everyone you get right, you'll get a point on. And you can get up to 45 points for the multiple choice section. And then for the free response section, each of the six questions is worth nine points. So you can earn up to 54 points. And different parts of each question can be worth a different amount of points. So I was kind of showing you in those examples, like for example, one question, you might get one point for part A, three points for part B, three points for part C, and two points for part D. They're all broken up differently, but it always adds up to nine points per free response question. So what they do is they add up all of those points. And after all of your points are added up for each of the sections, then your AP Calculus AB score, it's converted to the standard AP scoring scale of 1 to 5. So the exact formula for doing this, it changes slightly from year to year. So like back in 2008, their process for converting raw AP scores to scaled scores, it involved multiplying the number of multiple choice questions you answered correctly by 1.2272 and then adding that number to the points that you received on the free response section. And then this value is just rounded to the nearest whole number and that becomes your composite score. But every year that it changes a little bit, exactly how they get that composite score. They kind of look at the overall data of how everybody does before they set that formula. But essentially, they will do something to how many you got correct and get your composite score. And then each AP score from 1 to 5, it corresponds with a range of composite scores. So on this next page here, I have for you, this is a conversion chart and a score distribution for test takers from the 2020 exam. So you can kind of see where your composite score lies. That correlates with a 1 through 5 on the AP exam. And you can see the percentage of students that took it last year, which, you know, which percentages they fell into. So that's kind of a general idea, they're going to count up how many you got it right. They're going to do some weird math to it. Whatever they decide is right for that year, that'll give you a composite score. And then your composite score, depending on what range it falls in here, will convert then into a 1 through 5. By the way, I believe 3, 4, and 5 is passing. 5 is like superb. You guys see only 16% of test takers do get a 5. So if you get one, that's a very, very good. But you want to shoot for a 3 or higher if you're trying to get your college credit for this class. Alright, let me quickly go through some tips here. So studying for the AP Calculus AB exam can be tough. So I want you to use these three tips to make your studying more effective and increase your chances of getting a good score. So here's my first tip for you, memorize important formulas. There are certain formulas for AP Calculus AB that you should just have down pat. And there is no formula sheet given on the AP exam, none, nada. No formula sheet will be given to you. So you're going to have to memorize the formulas that you'll need. Some teachers give out formula sheets for students to memorize. There's also a ton of cheat sheets you can use to review before the exam. Like literally just go to Google and type in AP Calculus AB formula sheet. And a ton of them will come up. I Googled it the other day and there's a ton of them out there. But in general, any formula that you use regularly in class, that's going to be a good one to memorize. And the major formulas that you should have memorized include formulas for limits, formulas for differentiation, formulas for integration, and then of course, your fundamental theorems. So again, I'll say that again, you want to know all of your formulas for limits, taking derivatives, integrating, and then your fundamental theorems. Those for sure you want to memorize. So tip number one, memorize those important formulas because they're not going to give them to you on the test. Tip number two, know how to use your calculator. So you're allowed to use your calculator for two of the four exam parts. And most of the questions in these two sections will be difficult, if not completely impossible, to solve without graphing calculator. So while it might seem obvious, like duh, why is this lady telling me this? Duh, I should know how to use my calculator. But think about this, it's important to know exactly how and when to use the different functions on your calculator. That can save you a lot of time on the exam. It can also increase your chances of getting the correct answer. You don't want to be sitting there figuring out like, whoa, I know this thing does take a derivative, but it keeps saying error. And you don't know why, because you had a comma in the wrong place or something. So literally you want to practice using your calculator before the exam. If you know where all the functions are and you click through it, you're going to save yourself so much time and make your life a lot easier. Alright, and according to the College Board, the four calculator capabilities you'll use the most during the AP Calculus AB exam. And you should easily be able to do with your calculator, I have listed here on the screen. So definitely practice these four things. You need to know how to plot the graph of a function and adjust the viewing window. You need to be able to find the zeros of a function, which you can do graphically or using the solver. You need to really know how to do it both ways, be a good idea. You need to be able to numerically calculate the derivative of a function and numerically calculate the value of a definite integral. The TI-89 does all of that, that is my favorite calculator. And it's pretty easy and simple to use. But whichever calculator you pick, make sure it's capable of doing all four of these things. Otherwise, you need a different calculator. And then practice using it so you know where those buttons are and you're not just staring at it on test day. So again, when you're preparing for the exam, be sure that you know how to do each of these four things. Alright, and completing practice problems is going to help you a lot. My last tip is get used to showing all your work. So for most free response questions on the AP Calculus AB test, the final answer to a problem, it's only worth one to two points out of, remember we said it's out of nine. Getting the answer is typically one or two of those points, that's it, out of all nine of those. So this means that the majority of the points are earned through the intermediate steps of the problem. And if you don't show how you reach those intermediate steps, you're not going to get a high score on the free response section. So even if you get a correct answer by using your calculator, you have to write the setup. So that would be like the equation being solved, the integral or the derivative that you're doing. Before you just put it in your calculator, you have got to write it down on the test paper. Otherwise, you don't get credit for that part. So you've got to make sure to write everything down. And some of you guys, you might not be used to writing down certain work that seems particularly obvious on homework or your class tests. But even if your teacher doesn't mind, the AP graders will. Alright, so just remember that the AP graders, they're more interested in how you reached your final answer than they are in what the final answer is. So get yourself in the habit of showing each step of your work. Like right now, well before test day, start showing all of your work. So on a calculator problem, I just had a question come in and they asked how much work you should show on the calculator problems. So on the multiple choice, you obviously don't have to show any work. But on the free response, pretty much anything that you're going to type in your calculator, you got to write it down on the paper first. So if they told you to find the area under a curve or something like that and it's a calculator portion, don't forget to write the integral down on your paper before you type it in the calculator. But you can literally just write down what you're putting in the calculator and after you hit enter, you can just write the answer down. Just you want to make sure you put the setup, pretty much anything you're typing in, you got to write, you got to write it down. That way they know how you got, you know, that how, how you got there. Alright. I think I talked about. Okay, so in conclusion, what to know about the AP Calculus AB exam? The AP Calculus AB exam, it can be intimidating if you don't know what to expect. So knowing how the exam will be formatted and what types of questions it will ask, this can go a long way in helping you guys feel more prepared and just confident on testing. So just a quick reminder, the exam has two sections, multiple choice and free response. They're each divided into two parts based on whether you can use a calculator or not. And each of those sections is worth 50% of your total AP score. And so the exam itself covered three main topics. And just a reminder, those are limits, derivatives, and integrals along with the fundamental theorem of calculus. So in order to prepare for the AP Calculus AB exam in the best way, keep these three tips in mind during your review. Memorize your important formulas, know how to use your calculator, and get used to showing all of your work. So what's next? Well, now that you guys know what the AP Calculus AB exam covers, the next step's to practice. Alright, so that next step is literally just to practice. You know what's on it, you know what it's going to look like. So your next step is literally just, you're going to have to just dive in and do some practice problems. So that is all I have prepared for you guys today. I know, so I'd like to open it up for a Q and A. So at this time, if you guys have any questions, you can either just use the raise your hand feature and I can call on you and you can ask me out loud. Or if you want to just drop it in the Q and A or in the chat box, I'm pretty easy with whatever you want to do. Okay. Alright, Diana said, "I'm studying for the exam on my own and I was wondering if you could recommend a source for practice problems? Since I'm not signed up for an AP class, I don't have access to the practice problems on the College Board site." Great question, Diana, that's, I told you the next step is to practice. So knowing where to practice is great. And I'm actually, I'm going to help you out with that right now. I'm going to show you how easy it is to get some practice problems for yourself. Give me just a second, I'm going to open up a tab here. Oh, and this is on a side note, but I was going to say at the end of this, so I might as well say now, I, obviously I do test prep as a tutor and I do work on the Wise Ant platform. So if you are looking for somebody to guide you through this or something to get more resources off of, definitely feel free to hit me up, I am here to help. And I, I've literally got several students I'm doing AP prep with all day. So I would love to throw you in there and help you out. I wish, I don't know if y'all can see that bookshelf behind me way back there, but those are all textbooks and they're all just calculus books. And they are loaded with resources and old exams and stuff. So if you're working with me, you will never have to show up with anything. I will always have some stuff for you to do. But I also want to show you how pretty simple this is. So let me get a tab open. Back to my Wise Ant screen, or Zoom screen, sorry. Refresh, share my screen. You can do this with me, I'm pretty sure I did this the other day and let's try. Oops, so if you go to Google, we're going to type in, oh, I can get off of Zoom and get on here, there you go. So my advice is to literally go to Google and type in released AP Calculus AB exams. And... This one's AP Central, AP Central. Okay, so I'm pretty much going to show you the do's and the don'ts. If you click on any of those links that have College Board on it, it's literally going to make you sign into the AP classroom and it's going to make you pay. So if you're trying to not pay and you want free resources, you can literally click on any of, of these other resources. And I think the other thing that I did is the other thing that I typed in, sometimes I just put PDF at the end. And that will, that will also help you get some links. So literally, I just typed, you saw what I typed in and boom, here we go. This is the AP Calculus Practice Exam from 2012. And the changes are very minute. So using old exams, this is really the best way to practice, is using the old exams. And literally, you can see exactly what this old test looked like. So you're not panicked on test day, it's a full test that we just found right here. And most of these, most of these have solutions and stuff at the bottom. I'm not going to stay on this too long, but so the general, the, the general answer that I was getting at is type in AP Calculus AB released exams. If you put PDF on there, a lot of times it'll take you to teachers and stuff that have just like uploaded the old exams. And then you can literally go in here and once you get down to the actual questions. This is literally the entire exam. So there's a bunch of released tests. My, my best bet to you is if you want free resources, Google it. And that's the key words is released AP Calc exams. Put that word released in there and you can get a bunch of the old ones and sit there and work through it and it's free. And if you have an AP Classroom account through your school, then definitely use it. Or if you purchased your own AP Classroom account, definitely use it because College Board does have a lot of stuff out there. But if you're on a budget and you don't have an account for some reason, there is also plenty of like free full-length tests out here that you can, that you can go take to get extra practice. Alright, I'm going to just turn that off and go back to the chat box. Somebody is using Q and A. "I'm in grade 7, can I write..." Okay, I'm reading a question, it says, "I'm in grade 7, can I write AP for practice purpose? How long, oh, how long can I keep this?" Yes, okay, what they're asking, I was trying to understand the question. So I believe what they're asking me is if they could take the AP exam for practice and pretty much whether your score will be valid in a couple of years since you're in grade 7. So the answer to your question is yes, you can definitely take it for practice purposes. If you're not happy with your score, you can take it later and just never turn in your old score. Or if you take it for practice purposes and you blow the tops off of it and you do really well, your, your exam score is, you're going to be fine. By the time you get ready to apply to college down the road, that, that score will ever, for like forever be linked to you. So anytime a school goes to pull up your scores, it will be there. So you don't have to worry about your score expiring or anything and running out. If you pass it, you're good. I think it'd be a great idea if you think you're ready to go ahead and take a shot at it. That's kind of, that's kind of exciting. We've got a seventh grader in here. So yeah, I would say definitely take it and your score will not expire. And if you don't do well on it, it also won't hurt you. You can take it over again, you know, once you've been in the class longer or when you get a little bit older, you can take it again. So, great question. Yeah, no problem. Let's see. Oops, where'd my chat box go? Alright, I'm just skimming again, if you have anything, let me know. I'm trying, if I left, if I missed a question that you've sent somebody, feel free to like just post it again. I'm trying to skim and make sure I didn't miss anything. Oh, Ahmed had asked me during the thing if I have a Google Classroom or any, anything of that sort. Unfortunately, I'm so sorry, but the answer is no, I do. But it's only for 6th and 7th grade math. But it's only for 6th and 7th grade math, I don't have my AP Calculus stuff online yet. It's literally all sitting in binders, I don't know if you see that huge binder back there? I've just literally got it all on the shelf in binders. Yeah, a little old school, I just haven't had time to get it all uploaded. So unfortunately, I don't have anything already out there. But you guys are more than welcome to reach out to me on the Wise Amp platform. And even if, if you want to just be specific, hey, can you send me a couple free response questions to look over? I would be more than happy to send you a resource or two. Especially if you wanted to follow up with a session and maybe go over them after you tried it. I would love to share some stuff with you, but unfortunately, I don't currently already have it online. So you will just, but if you reach out to, I should check, but reach out to me on Wise Amp, guys, I'm here to help. So I would be more than happy. I'm actually just checking my Dropbox real quick and see if I have any of that stuff uploaded. Because if I do have a link, I will just share it with you right now. I just can't remember if I had my Dropbox when I started making all of this stuff. Before I got Dropbox, you guys know how it is, everything gets deleted when you get a new computer. So let's see, I've got my virtual school stuff. Pre-calculus. Yes, okay, so I answered my own question. I don't have any of my calc stuff online, but if you guys want to reach out to me on the platform, I don't have any problem sending you some stuff. So they just dropped my link for Wise Amp into the chat box. So if you guys want to copy and just save that link, you can reach out to me and connect with me on Wise Amp through there. And if you have something, you know, specific, if you want to set up a session, I'd be more than happy to work with you. And if you just need a couple like free response questions or something to go over, feel free to message me and I don't mind, I'll just take a snapshot of some of my resources back there and share them with you. Alright, if we have any other questions, feel free to put them in the Q and A. Never used the Q and A feature before, that's kind of cool. Alright, well, if there are no more questions, we can go ahead and wrap up for today. And if you want to reach out for me, for, to me for a tutoring session, go ahead and connect with me via the link that Wise Amp had dropped in the chat for you. And also, if you guys are studying for other AP exams, you guys can check out the, there's like 30 plus other free AP study sessions that Wise Amp has going on over the next few weeks. So they're probably gonna drop a link for that in the chat as well. So if you're studying for any other AP exams, feel free to check that out, yeah, there goes the link in the chat for you. So if you want more information about signing up, go ahead and check that out. I want to thank you guys so much for joining me tonight and I want to wish you all the best of luck on your exams. Alright, thank you so much.